Call me in or I'll have county commission order.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice of the world.
Oh, we're late. We're gonna be behind all day now.
It's gonna be really fast.
We are ready.
Are you ready? Okay. So, my budget, I only had a couple of changes, um, the salaries, of course, and there was email sent on June 23rd that basically gave me what my numbers should be, and it looks like approximately three and a half percent is a recorded salary increase, and then the deputies is about four percent. And the only other increases I made were to my travel budget. I increased it $200. Um, my 2015 convention is gonna be in Medora. And of course, they don't have the state rate. They are doing a reduced rate, so I'll probably be back to ask for, uh, maybe some leeway on paying a little extra for the rooms down there. And then, the other thing I increased was my miscellaneous for, um, the Recorder Association membership dues are going to increase because we're gonna contract with the association accounties to do some things for us, so that's gonna go up a little bit. And then, the other item was the Endorin budget, which is on the other page. I increased that to what the balance of the account was at the time. And the reason I did that is because I had that scanning project that you guys approved at a meeting a little while ago, and I wasn't sure if that was going to take place this year or next year, so I wanted to make sure if it could happen next year, I would have enough money and we wouldn't have to like an amendment process. Um, and it turns out, it's probably gonna be half and half, half out of this year, half out of next. So, it'll probably be more than enough, but that's why that's as high as it is. And, other than that, that's it.
Look, Katie, uh, in your travel expense, uh, I don't know how many days you're gonna be, don't have a meeting in Medora? If, if this isn't enough to cover it, are you gonna have another place that you could get the money from?
Um, this be enough to cover it.
Or this will be-
If I had to skip something else, I would. I mean, I would never go over budget.
No, what I was thinking is if, if you're pretty sure this couldn't be enough, then maybe you should go for it now to cover it.
Well, one thing they did at this year's convention is they had an Endorin meeting, and when they have Endorin meetings, Endorin actually pays your expenses.
Oh.
And so, I did not have travel expenses for my mileage coming home because they submitted that to Endorin then rather than the county. So, if they decided to do something like that, then of course, mileage to Medora is a good chunk of change. Um, then, I would save a little bit that way. But my biggest concern is the rooms. And I can't remember if they said the rate was gonna be maybe ninety dollars instead of the approximately seventy dollars of the state. So, it's not a huge increase, plus they're trying to decrease the amount of days and shorten the convention, so it's probably gonna be one less day, so it should work out. That's just why I only put in an extra $100. Any other questions?
Elizabeth, didn't we already amend that state rate deal once?
No, um, you mean for lodging?
Yeah.
They have to come before the board before they go, just like I did.
Thought we had changed that because Minot didn't have it.
Right. Remember, I came before the board, you guys made a motion, that's what came in.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if we had changed the whole thing or if we just changed it at one time.
It's just, yeah, it's by case. So, we make sure they try to get the state rate, 'cause I tried like, but Minot wouldn't go.
Yeah, I went to our meeting or everything was in the-.
They did do a reduced rate for what their normal rate is, but it's not the state rate.
'Cause I think their normal rate is like 169, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm sure it's on there. It's-. The American is where she said she was able to work with the guy and get, yeah, a little bit better rate for us, so. But yeah, when that gets closer, I'll, I'll come back for that.
Just a little further from home.
Honestly, we had it up at Lake Nagoshi, and if you look down in the southeast corner of the state, you know, you're not essentially looking. You have to drive a long ways to get to some of this stuff.
I think that's where we're going, to Medora.
I think it is, isn't it, Lisa?
Yep, they're putting our treasures together, but I think our state rate was 120, and we're staying in the same location. I don't know.
They like us better.
That's what treasures convention, yeah. Probably with Betty, so we're taking that out of her budget.
Oh.
I'm just kidding.
Well, I'm guessing they probably spend more in the bar, so they're making it up to after.
You would be so conscious. We have recorders.
I mean, I would know anything more than that, but I heard.
Do you have any other questions on my budget?
Nope, nope, we're good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
See ya.
Lisa.
Next, huh? Um, well, let me see. I did go down a little bit in the, um, as a clerk, uh, that, um, Ervone is going to come back and work part-time again, so, and I did miss Belle Ervone. Um, she worked for us last year. It worked out really well because, um, she'd kind of work in the morning. If I didn't meet her in the afternoon, she was good to go home. She was so weak, wasn't somebody just sitting there. Um, travel expenses are the same. Everything is pretty much the same. As you can see. Uh, I don't think we're gonna order anything new. Like, computers are all up to date. I think everything is pretty much good. I'm going to, uh, be running the mobile home statements. I've got, they've came over to my office. Um, so I'm gonna order, and that's gonna be the same papers I use for my trip, my tax statements, just a different backing on them. That's not gonna be a big deal, but that's about close to 500 more statements to run and get out. So... Any questions on that?
Lisa, what's that salary official SOS?
Where did you say that?
On page eight. What is that, the school?
Oh.
That's the superintendent of schools.
Okay, okay, okay.
And of course, with that, we still miscellaneous, we still do a joint agreement with, um, the school. They do run the spelling bee and they run the math count. Um, they do that for us, so that's a joint agreement with them. And things might change in that department too as enrollment and the public schools go down, especially when you're looking at Starkweather and Edmore, you don't know how long they'll hang in there. Time will tell.
Starkweather, what do you know?
Mm-hmm.
190, I think, uh, to, to the last one.
Mm-hmm. Well, I don't know if Edmore has that.
Yeah.
I wanna say Edmore had like seventy, seventy-six sticks in my mind, but I don't know what it is.
I think that's case twelve.
Yes, yeah.
So, if there is a consolidation, it'll take a lot of effort and we realize, Lisa, that, you know, you, you will need help with that. We, we have that in the-.
Yes, yes, that's going to take a, a lot of, 'cause then everything has to go to a re-district, and then, of course, you have your hearings and stuff, and... But as right now, you know, I have some people come in in the summer, and we have everything in filing cabinets. We have everything laminated, so it's pretty easy to find, especially if they have a date and a name and a pretty, uh...
So, the twenty years going up, basically, is on salaries, is that right, Lisa?
Yeah. I just figured we took on the mobile homes and, um, got a little, but, not a little, it's a lot of extra work to get everything straightened out, and I've been putting on the new mobile homes as they've been coming in. Um, of course, we're still with our same program, and I think it's okay. I mean, it, it only takes me probably, I'm thinking, twenty to thirty minutes to put on a new mobile home. It's not a big deal. It works. And I know we talked about the new program, Tyler Technologies, they're not ready for us. They don't know anything about increment districts. They, they're just not ready.
How many mobile homes have you been counting?
They were looking at about 486.
496.
Four eighty-six. And you know how they rip up the skirting and they move and they carry on, and sometimes you have to track them down, and... And of course, their taxes don't have to be paid to move them, or they don't have to, if they change names, they don't have to pay their taxes in full. So, then we have to try and look everybody or find individuals.
I know we have one meeting, but I was just curious. Taxes alleviated a lot of work for him, for our tax director.
I don't know. He's gonna do the assessing, as far as I know. Um, and of course, mobile homes usually do an, we just, what is it? You run it up on the computer of a decrease, 'cause most of the time, they decrease.
Decrease, yeah. The state gives you a decrease, the percentage wise, and then you can just run it over the whole mobile home.
Was that based on age or size?
They take a depreciation and then-
Every year, they do.
And then spite your mobile home and things like that.
And I think Steve wants to implement program that will automatically do mobile homes as well as, as other property values. If you, if you, oh, I'm talking about current here, but you can go online, go to the parcel, hit the parcel, the spot where the mobile home is, and it will tell you how much it's gonna decrease this year, whether or not it's still there, and that person can actually, um, print up their own tax statement. And that's gonna work not only for mobile homes, but it's-
Who's going to do this? This is the first time I've ever heard of this. Wow, I'm just, I'm like, what?
Steve has a program that he found out about.
This Steve?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll find out about it in about ten minutes, I guess.
Unless you might should sit and wait, because this is the first time I've heard about it.
Well, you, you might want to, and that's why I mentioned it.
Because, I mean, there's things too. I don't email, you know, they want to know too if we'll start emailing statements. Well, you know, we, when we do a foreclosure, you have to make sure that you did the first mailing of that statement. You have to make sure, because if that comes back to us, we have a file that, you know, those people come in and say, well, you didn't get that statement to me. Here it is. I mean, we have to have something that comes back to us.
Oh, right. I didn't mean it was gonna take a place of the mailing. I'll say-
You, you send a certified, Lisa.
If you're doing-
Well, we send all the tax statements out. We hope that they get to the right owner, okay? But say it comes back to us, we hold it in a file, then runs that foreclosure, okay? Say that individual comes back to us and says, hey, I'm not paying penalty interest. You didn't try and mail this to me.
We had that last year with the current people.
Yeah, yeah, here it is. We've got it. And that, you know, you're supposed to, if you own property, you know you're getting a tax statement. You should be aware of it. But there is some people out there that just, I didn't get it. I'm not paying it.
And then when you have three owners, you send out three different parcels. I mean, we babysit a lot.
Oh.
And then, they say, well, I didn't get it. He got it, but I didn't get it. You were supposed to send it to me, and it's like, that's not our responsibility. You're the taxpayer. If you don't get his statement, call us. It says right in the signature.
Yeah, it says in the signature.
Right. And actually, we only have to, by law, send out one statement.
Right.
But I probably have right now, I don't know how many individuals I have, I mean, I have some landowners that age of one seven. That's seven different envelopes going out, but we've always done it that way. So, we continue to babysit that way.
Thank you for babysitting me.
Yeah.
Are you one of those?
I mean, that's just, we've always done it.
And call her mom.
I thought we'd get away with that.
What do you do with me? I call the son of a bear.
Any questions, Lisa?
So, you're looking at about a ten percent increase for Jackie?
Um, how did I go here? I didn't take percentage. I just took what, um, Tommy had put out there, and I guess I've asked Tommy to kinda help with the different wage of taking on more work, and she said, put in what you got.
So, are you reclassifying her job then?
No, but we maybe should need a new job description. I have asked for that, and I know Tommy's been busy with other stuff, so I just patiently waited.
How, how many years does Jackie have, do you know?
Do you know that?
She started in two thousand.
Fourteen, so she's got fourteen years, so she should be getting a one percent out of the two, so she should be getting three percent. Her, her dad?
She's not known.
No, this is what-
She's involved in the trailer office building?
Yeah.
What do we tell on your, under the requirements, what figure do you use?
It's in there. If you look at your pay scale, it's marked in your book. It's two percent plus, right under the red, you'll get two percent. It's a two percent plus the stamp. And Jackie split between my office and Lisa's office. So, she was down for a three, um, Lisa and you?
Yeah.
I always go down, we can't go up.
But we can go up, yeah. Good point. Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks.
Stacy.
Good morning.
You're up.
I'm up. Well, I'm new at this, so you'll have to tell me what you need. Have you got the copy of what I submitted?
Everybody, that's everybody.
Okay. Um, the, uh, one of the things I'd touch on, first of all, is travel, which I share with Nelson County House, so that's been reduced. Uh, I have not had any instance in Ramsey County where I've had to submit any travel issues other than, uh, our conference. I've not traveled in the county yet. Uh, I don't know that there'll ever be a need. Uh, we're gonna have more and more veterans coming, uh, due to the clinic, although I have gotten numerous phone calls from elderly veterans in Edmore area. So, if there ever came a need, I imagine at some point, I probably would have to do a home visit or something like that, which I've done in town here.
Stacy, I know you're old, did make some trips up there in that, having an Edmore area. Do, do you do that, or do you find on doing that though?
If I have to, it's, uh-
On call?
Yep, and, and, uh, like, instances here in Dallas Lake where you got a, a veteran in a wheelchair or is closed in, you know, at home home, uh, then I've done house calls. So, if that ever comes the case, if it's easier for me to go to Edmore than the veteran to come here, then I would do that, yeah. But I haven't, uh, seen the need yet. And, uh, so like, in, in Nelson County, I do a lot of road work when I go to the nursing homes. And, uh, but yet here, all the nursing homes are right here in town, so, uh, that's the one that, I think, that could come up in travel. The, uh, other item, uh, which is miscellaneous and tell, or office supplies, I increased, uh, them slightly. Uh, I need a different desk, different furniture in that office. The chairs that are in for the veterans to come sit in, especially the elderly, similar to this type of chair. When they get back in there, they can't get out of them. So, I need a higher or a more of a, just a, like the chair by the door, something that, that they can get out of easier. 'Cause I've had a number of times where I've had to help them get out of the chairs, so. And then, uh, the desk, uh, is just, there's not enough desk there for, uh, for all of the, I need more surface area, plus I need more drawers. I got three drawers, and I should have nine drawers.
Have you talked to Roger?
Um, we talked about it when, like, when, uh, when you had the stuff downstairs, and there was nothing that fit the bill, but, uh, he's keeping his eye on, yeah.
Has there ever been thought of, like, being in Edmore and then, one day a week, or on half a day or two hour period?
Yeah, that's, if that, if that comes up, I'm at the college one hour a week. Um, and at some point in time, I assume they may want a presence at camp, and that could be another hour a week situation, stuff like that. Um, you know, and, and this, uh, what I've submitted here, of course, the increase in salary, which I let you know right up front when I took the job, that would revisit that. That, that's in there. But the, uh, possibility of, we talked about this, about combining the two counties and cutting back time in Lakota, which I'm not busy at all in Lakota. Uh, and whatever merger or however we term that, uh, for in the future, uh, we should, however, we have to sit down and, and work the two counties out. I'm pretty sure they're, they're, uh, would accept whatever we have to do.
Any thoughts on that, Elizabeth?
I'm him being full-time here.
Well, I won't, I'll split Nelson County here. Yeah, well, you want to agree with that.
That's what we're doing now, half-time and half-time.
Yeah, but I need more here than over there.
I think you have to look at paying benefits at least three quarters.
At least more than half.
What's your computer? Did you get a new computer?
Yeah, everything, uh, as far as equipment wise, the office is good that way. Uh, the only thing I really need in the office is the, is the desk situation. Get something rearranged in there. If we, with a larger desk, and there's, I think there's only two outlets in there, we've got, uh, power strips. One outlet is not being utilized because it's so far away. The, the outlet's in the way of the, uh, of the veterans that sit in chairs, so you really don't run too many cords over there. So, a, a different desk or different arrangement in there would, uh, make more sense for, uh, all the way around, especially for what I need on the desk. Other than that, the salary issue, um... And I think what I asked for last, uh, winter when we started talking about this, I believe that's what I've got calculated into that number there. Lakota, I've got what I submitted for them right here also. Total, what I submitted for Lakota was 23.8, and we're 26.5, and it's basically salary and, uh, office supplies. We are, or I am approximately four to five times busier here than I am in Lakota. I'm already seeing Nelson County veterans are coming here also.
There's no interest from Nelson County that would, you know, not have you over there, is there?
Oh, no. The, the state requires that, uh, that we have a presence there, and I think, uh, what I, we've talked about the taxes, a possibility of two afternoons a week, and, uh, right now, they're not adverse to that. I'll have this discussion with them next week, and, uh, let's see where, where it all goes.
Well, if we're gonna hot this, we have to do it now, right?
But this isn't gonna cover if you go with three quarters.
No.
Just a little cross, you have to put-
No, yeah, we have to-
His fixed charge isn't high for this wage either.
No.
His fixed charge, if you give him this wage, is gonna be 17.45, and right now, his phone is in the red by 9:12, so the lemonner isn't gonna cover that. But then, his travel, he's got 3.2485 left at the end of June, but maybe he's turning in vouchers since then. I haven't looked.
No, I have no vouchers. Uh, travel wise, we have, uh, the conference coming up the first week of October in Fargo. It'll be, uh, three or four days in Fargo.
But, is this if your three-quarters time is 22.8?
Nope, this is right now, as we're doing-
Halftime?
Yeah, halftime.
But Tonya put 20,081, and you're putting 22.8?
Yeah, I feel the job requires, um, I, I looked at other counties with similar veteran population, and nearly all counties with this veterans population has one to one and a half people.
Well, I think we should definitely increase our, his responsibility as county with that best clinic care now, I mean, I mean...
I almost said we need to look at having a full-time employee.
Well, I don't wanna bump Nelson County out either, so I'm, I'm gonna be aware, but according to Stacy, Nelson County doesn't have to, to fall any of these.
Right.
But, yeah. They wanna have, they wanna have you a certain guy with it.
Yeah.
Nelson County population is coming here to see-
Because they're going to the VA clinic.
The after, they're already traveling to town, so just come and see them here, so actually, we're picking up, you know, part of their population anyway.
Well, I would guess you're picking up some of Nelson County's population as well.
I just got a call from a lady from rugby.
Yeah.
I've had numerous calls from people, I've had bell cord people stopping in here already. And that's, part of this is because of being on that television, and, uh, we're saying that the, like, for example, this, this elderly lady whose, uh, veteran husband passed away has issues that they should be taking care of in Pierce County. I'll call and I'll give her the name of the person over there, and that's what she's gonna come and refer her to. But yet, in the end, if someone's having trouble and isn't getting anything done, which has been happening in the past, uh, had, just happened in Nelson for years, I got veterans in Pembina, Catalina, I mean, I got all over that would come and see me. They, uh, I don't turn them away. If they're not getting help in their own county, I, I do whatever I can do for them. And we'll see more of that at, with this clinic, uh, going on.
Well, what is it, about eight or nine percent of the total population in Ramsey County are vets? Do we average about that percentage?
I don't know what the total population is, but we're, we're well over 300 veterans pop, in population, and then, at any given time, we have more than 300 veterans at Camp Craft. So, I mean, and that, the Camp Craft and veterans are not in the statistics.
Or, uh...
'Cause they're still active duty?
Or the Camp Craft can be interested in part of your salary?
It's, it's our responsibility.
Yeah, it's, it's all laid on the county, the state office.
What's the max we can levy for my soul?
I have to look here. Um, I don't have to look, and I can grab it.
The, the state authorizes counties two mils for veteran service?
Oh, I think it is.
Um, right now, we're, well, on Earl, it's here as .4.
Stacy thinks that 22.8, we'll, we'll cover it, you know, I don't, we just approved that for today, and we can discuss it and make questions.
'Cause I think we're gonna have to go up, and we can't go up after today.
I have a question, though. If we go three-quarter time or full-time, don't we have to open it up again?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Because when we opened it up, it was part-time.
And with no benefits.
I think if Stacy thinks that that's gonna, I think we should honor that.
Half-time with no benefits.
If, you know, if, if he's got extra time over in Nelson County, and he's sitting over here, and Nelson County's paying him this much money, and maybe his guys are coming over here, there, it's in essence, paying them for the guys that are coming over here, so...
But we do need to increase the fixed charge if you go with that, because that, that'll be 17.45.
Well, then if we're not, if we're in the red with telephone and office supplies already from this year, we're gonna have to increase that. And if we're, and, and the last time I checked, you couldn't buy a desk and chairs for eight hundred dollars and that gives us nothing else for miscellaneous expenses.
I think we'd be hoping that Roger would be able to come up that would, so, would so that it'd be sufficient for some of the other offices getting equipment and something to pay on that.
You got anything you can give him, London?
Um, we may have that large oak desk, but I don't know how functional that would be for you. A lot of it is outdated for computer usage now.
That's, and that hard disk problem is, is never made for computers.
Yeah.
This number that's written up in the corner here, Tonya's twenty thousand eight eighty-one. Wouldn't she have investigated around the mistake of what these, of what he was being paid?
I don't think so, because that's basically a four percent over what he's at now.
That may not have.
And what percentage?
May not have included the clinic, clinic probably wasn't open.
Well, who's got a full time?
Walsh County, Walsh County does.
Craft in here.
Cause that's where some of our veterans are going for, for, um, clinic care. Um, and then why did we increase in March from, from?
Four.
What was the percentage increase in March, seeing as?
We'd imagine at sixteen three.
Sixteen seventy-three.
Is what you were at, but what was it before that, before we gave you?
Yeah, you were, your goal was thirteen something?
I thought it was fifteen eight seventy-six for salary, that's what it says for twelve.
And if you take sixteen three seventy-six and divide it by twelve, how much do you get?
Thirteen four, thirteen over twelve?
Yeah, that's what Pearl was at.
And then what did we increase it to in March?
Sixteen seventy-three.
And what's that times twelve?
Uh, twenty thousand seventy-six per year, that's per year.
So that's what he is, that's what Stacy's right actually at right now is twenty thousand seventy-six annual.
Yep.
Rather than this sixteen three seventy-six.
But he came mid-year, so.
Well, he came in February.
Well, he's right.
Came in February first and then, and then March first, we increased it by what, four hundred and some dollars a month?
Right, and he hadn't made his six month probation either, that was a lot of discussion. And she recommended four percent and he's asking for fourteen percent.
Well, if in twenty-two eight cover, let's stay on schedule today and discuss it in the future. But we, if we do need to, uh, adjust the fixed charges and, uh, and the telephone and miscellaneous, then let's do that today.
Well, if we say at twenty-eight eighty-one, then can't we put more money in the telephone and the miscellaneous? Because the fixed charges are correct then at twelve fifty for twenty-eight eighty-one. Can't we take the twenty-two eight and back to twenty-eight eighty-one and take that eleven twelve hundred dollars and put it in miscellaneous and telephone?
Well, we could if we don't do anything and we have to do that. But if we do think that he's gonna, uh, need to have an increase in wages, we better, uh, take care of those separately.
But don't we decide, don't we decide then?
And if you take Tonya's twenty thousand eight eighty-one, fixed charges would be sixteen hundred. And then telephone and office supplies, and I'm not sure, I think it's due to the fact we bought a new computer this year. So the eleven hundred might be okay, cause we took his new computer out of there, his laptop.
Oh.
So that's probably why.
Okay.
And then we bought him a printer and part of a scanner.
Mm-hmm.
So that's probably, so the eleven hundred is probably.
Is probably okay.
Okay. But then the miscellaneous expense for gas and then we share that program every year with Nelson County.
Yeah.
I don't know if a hammer's gonna be enough.
Uh, not for desk and, and other.
And chairs and, and the program.
What, what's the cost of that program a year?
Four hundred, uh.
And we pay too much, right?
Yeah, it's split, it's split, currently split.
Yeah.
Yes. So, yeah, you're not gonna, I guess I don't buy many desks and chairs, but.
I guess my point is this isn't the final final, so let's just, uh.
But I, I think it should go up, because we can't raise it after the day after our meeting.
No, no, not today, we can't raise it.
Where do you wanna raise to? Wanna raise to eight hundred or what, fifteen hundred or what?
I wanna know if we should be paying three quarter time.
Stacy said when he started off today that, you know, and he, we should have probably set up a schedule with him in Elizabeth for a little bit to show, ever show him how this works.
Mm-hmm.
I would need help, I know that.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know what fixed, uh, fixed charges is, and that's basically your FICA and, and your.
Medicare.
Like he's told us already, I mean, there's smaller veterans populations in counties and they have full time directors.
If, if.
And they don't have a clinic.
Correct.
Right.
And they don't have Camp Craft.
We've just gotten a BA clinic in this community. I can't believe while we're dodging around just arguing about a hundred dollars or two.
I think we should bring him to a full time position.
Well, if half time is working.
Wow.
And, and it appears like it is.
One week.
No, I, just, let, let me finish, Bernard, before you interrupt me. Uh, if, if it's going and Nelson County is satisfied with him being here, the amount of time he is and it's working, basically what I feel is if we can get through this year like this again, let the clinic get settled for more than two weeks before we make, make moves in that. And I think it'll give everybody a chance to get settled in a little more. But I do feel we need to increase miscellaneous expense at this time now. So we can get him the desk and chair that he needs in his office. And, but as far as the half time, I feel as long as it's working and both counties are satisfied with how it's going, I, I guess I don't see the need for the change right now. Uh, is there gonna be more demand? I don't doubt it. And is the need gonna be there for us to have more, him here more time than he is, I don't doubt that. But it, from what I'm understanding from, it is working fine right at this point.
And if we have to make any of those changes, we have to re-advertise and go.
Yeah.
Go the other route too and this will all be a new point then, so.
Well, the, my other concern is you haven't been to Nelson County yet. Are you gonna explain this exactly the same way to Nelson County? They're paying for half time, but they're getting one-fifth of the time? And that, that's my concern, I, they come back and say, no way are we gonna do that?
And we're expecting.
Then where we at?
A fairly large raise in, in Nelson. One of the discussions are, and we're gonna get an increase in salary there. Um, I, I, again, I don't wanna be, uh, working here for less money than I'm getting in Nelson, you know.
No, and I don't want you to be getting less money here than you're getting in Nelson.
Because the, the, and that's where, we, we've talked about being full time here and, uh, and I guess you start talking three quarter, full time, but yet, when, when I say full time here, I'm still saying two afternoons a week in Lakota. Uh, and combining the two counties and then.
But if I, now, if I were a commissioner in Nelson County and you were telling me that you were going to spend one-fifth of your time in Nelson County, I'm not sure I would be willing to pay half of your salary for them.
Exactly.
And I don't know how we can expect them to do that, I mean, I'm trying to be fair here.
Yeah, it's two fifths, but.
We should talk to Nelson County.
I think we should talk to Nelson County before we do anything here too.
If Stacy says that his Nelson County people are coming over here and using his time over here.
Yeah.
And, and he is getting paid for it, Nelson County is paying for that.
It's just what office are they sitting?
Yeah.
Well, and, and what I'm saying is, I realize that he's only here four hours a day, five days a week. How do you know that, and, and I'm assuming if he were here three quarters of the time, he would have a lot more veterans from Ramsey County?
Well, exactly.
I, 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 that's what I'm saying.
More veterans are gonna be coming in.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying. Are we, are we shirking our responsibility by not providing the service? Should they be lining up at the door?
I, I don't think we are at all, because I, I think as soon as we do that, we're gonna be pulling in, paying for bed, uh, not being more veterans from outside of Ramsey County too. Not that them veterans don't deserve help, I am not saying that at all. But as far as us not holding up our end of the deal, I don't think that's right at all. I, I think we're totally holding up. But, uh, it's already been said, we can't bring him on for more than half time unless we open that job up again and go through that whole process.
And why?
Let's just double missing, missing, I guess, right now, sixteen hundred, that should be enough to cover the debt.
And Elizabeth says fixed charges have to go to, Stacy gotta go to, what do you want him up to?
Seventeen forty-five.
Okay, and then that telephone.
That's okay, because that was, take that computer, I forgot, my computer and scanner.
Is that all right with you, Stacy?
Sounds good so far.
So then we'll ask.
Miscellaneous, uh, that whole?
Yep, sixteen, I think you would have said.
I think that's a good idea, and then of course we have to do seventeen forty-five.
You, you're pretty sure those that would be, out this position of three quarter, we have to re-advertise.
I'm pretty sure.
You have to ask Lonnie or?
I've asked Lonnie, Lonnie's old enough.
You have to re-advertise, because whenever it's advertised, it was half time.
You're aware of that, Stacy?
I am not.
Do you have a comment?
But I think what's not saying is, this, this wage and everything, you're still saying half time, half time, right? So there's no benefits, is what you're recommending.
That's what I recommend, is that we leave it where it is, but it cares. But his budget stays as it is, except for the increases that we put in there, is my recommendation.
So that'll be, the bottom line on that will be twenty-seven eight forty-five then.
And what are you, what are you anticipating for your half time salary in Nelson for year?
Nelson?
For Nelson, excuse me.
Okay, uh, Nelson's a little different than the, you guys do it. I have requested twenty-one two for salary in Nelson, because I know that in order to get something above what I'm getting now, I have to go way up to argue, cause they're gonna come way down. Uh, we, we are asking, no, I mean, it's a game over there, every, every, every year it's a game that you gotta play. You gotta ask for more to get, uh, something, uh, that's a decent increase. And, uh, so we play the game. But we, as a group of, uh, department heads over there, we went and we asked for five percent plus cost of living, uh, whether or not they'll go with that, because somehow the commissioners over there, percentages don't work. Will give you two hundred dollars one month flat across the board, seems to go countywide, because they can understand two hundred dollars. They can understand percentages. And it just, you get, you got people working there forty years, getting the same as somebody who came in last month. If, uh, you just, they're, they're hardened ahead over there. I didn't say that.
I won't tell them that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's real, you're gonna go.
Shit.
I just wanna.
So was that?
Does somebody got a, a button? Steve, you got a button? No? Huh, I told you to get the button.
We need to ready.
No, we're gonna YouTube tomorrow.
Okay.
Done?
I'm done.
So we're gonna stay with the twenty, twenty-two eight for the salary also?
Maximum.
For, for right now?
And we can talk a little bit.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Okay. Anything else for Stacy? Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you very much.
Steve?
Sorry, just, just gonna say, Steve, you gotta go fast.
We can go fast if you want. The IT budget's at eight seven. Besides, uh, salary increase, I've included an extra three hundred dollars for support, raise it to two thousand. That's basically nowadays be two hours of NRG remote in, so that can be gone, just like that. And an extra five thousand in the equipment, which I guess is half of a new database that looking at, that it would be split with the GIS office, but it's, that would allow the tax records to be online, available for public use, I guess, just like, kind of like a parcel viewer is. And I can show a demonstration if you'd like, to see what Richland County has, it all set up.
We might have to have you come in and do that, you know, between now and finding funding.
Yeah, it, it's pretty neat, I've looked there.
Well, what's your thoughts?
Well.
That's just to upgrade the database to the level that, like Richland County has, that it basically just, it downloads everything from a tax system overnight and then keeps it all up, it's up to date and.
So the public can go into it and find out what, how's that worth the street?
Yeah.
Print off.
That's our.
Print off a tax statement for the last. A potential liar can find that out.
Yeah.
Anybody can find it out.
Yeah.
How would that work with the increment district, where we take the values out after we run the statements?
I.
It wouldn't update, I suppose it would be blank, because it's.
Cause I got a blank on the screen.
Yeah.
Are, are taxes supposed to be public information?
Absolutely.
This is, oh, I'm asking, I, I don't think it should be, just, you know, it's none of my business, what you pay.
But if you wanna buy my policy, it is your business, what I pay. And.
Yeah, but then I come and request that.
But, and I realize.
I'm just saying, that's my opinion, if that's law, that's law, I'm not arguing with you.
Right.
But you won't, you won't, Steve, list the taxpayers and what they're paying, you won't have a list like that, or you will?
You can click on the parcel.
And what they already paid?
Here's.
What, they're gonna call up Ed Brown and?
Here's Richland County's website right now. And you can search by anything.
I mean, put in a name, let's try that, put, put in, um.
Johnson.
Who do you know in Richland?
Harris. See, um, Harris is.
Kristin Hens. Yeah. Oh, Lynn. Lynn, oh, and Richland, yeah, yeah.
There.
Oh, you can put in Hank, that's a treasure up there.
There it is, all right. Harris, Gene is his name?
Just go for somebody we don't know.
And then any, any parcel?
They're, they're fine.
Well, use that one, I mean, we care, we don't know.
There's his tax.
See, it shows what?
Would it increase in the last four or five years?
See, it went down from twelve to thirteen because of the.
That's the first time I've heard of what we're doing, so I didn't know.
Valuation plan.
This is a request, yeah. And they're just asking.
There is a privacy in this world.
So I want you to know what I pay in personal property tax, well, I don't, our, our property taxes.
I'm fine with this.
Well, it doesn't matter whether I'm fine with it or not, it's the way it is and it's the law, so it's gonna be there.
It is the law, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying.
It's just making it a whole lot easier, fine.
What, what I'm, what I'm asking, okay?
Does it put on here for pay?
Is this going to benefit the auditor's office, the director's office and the tax director's office? Is this gonna be a benefit?
Where's that at then?
I have no idea, I.
This is my question.
I think when the banks call it will be.
The only thing is if they understand, because we look at home security, we look at all the abatements.
When they underline that need, that.
And we're the ones that did on it.
I.
The home security exam and these payments are all the tax of it.
If they understand, I mean, personally, we keep all our records when we do our closing with the downing.
That one's paid.
We do all of that, and we gotta know that we gave them the right input.
Uh-huh. What about the world knowing to get your tax paid?
Yeah, I, I thought so, but.
Yes. Once you get into this program, Steve, for ten grand, then what's it cost after that? That's, is there a fee you pay every year?
No. No.
That should be, that should be, that's well, until.
It has to be up there.
They have it up there.
Right, I mean, it's kind of just being worked around with Richland County and something to be.
Just another way, not the one to invest in right now.
Who's, um, who's your computer, who's the, where's it coming from?
Who's the company?
Who's the company?
I don't know who, well.
Well, all your people go back to the.
A new Microsoft database, but, like, Richland County gave me the, the code for the webpage. Because they've already paid for it, and they're willing to.
Share.
Share it.
They're the only one in the state that's has it, that's using it.
I, something like this, what this, I mean, they've got the same tax program and everything the same as us. Like, like Grand Forks, I think, has some things, and other counties have something similar. Right now, Richland is setting up Graves County with this as well. He was helping them do that.
Over the last, I don't know, twenty years, been able to go on the internet and find out also how much somebody got from the farm program, right to the dollar. And there's numerous people that I know that do it. I've never done it, but I've always said, well, I never got enough out of the government, you know. But, uh, no, I, I would.
We always got it in the budget, if we want to invest in it, we, we prepare. If you want a full demonstration, we can do that before the final payment.
I think I'd add enough of a demonstration.
I think it looks great. And I think, I really do think it's gonna help Lisa, because what you showed me yesterday, the mobile homes are on there, everything's on it.
Well, I'm just a lot.
Mobile homes are on there, Jeff? Will that link to the parcel viewer, the statements?
He walked, I'm.
There's a button there, and likewise, if they're on a parcel viewer, they can click it.
Okay, yeah, so click on that parcel viewer, and it shows exactly where that property is on the parcel viewer.
So would this be able to replace the parcel viewer? I could go into this and just click on the name of the person that you wanna find in the property and, and, uh, or is this the same picture as the parcel viewer?
This would link to the parcel viewer.
Yeah, it would be a link.
And likewise, it can link from the parcel viewer to the.
To this.
Right, so.
Okay.
All the questions right now?
Anything else, Steve?
And you said that shared half with this budget and half with the GIS budget?
Right, because it would help the GIS database as well. The, the upgrade, but.
And so with a five thousand dollar increase in the GIS budget, you'd be up to forty-nine, and the request's for fifty-five, so what's the extra there?
Half of his wages, half of his wages.
Yeah, and.
Each place.
Yes.
And, yeah, part of the wages and the difference then besides that is, I guess, thirty-eight hundred seventy-nine, which I've included just for a new aerial photo or something, some extra in there for, it's not enough for, to do it by myself, I guess, but the city does something, or the state, they have extra by, I guess, to upgrade what we get. So.
Hey.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Roger.
Okay, uh, we wanna start with the plea boards, get that out of the way. We have to allocate enough money for equivalent of three mils, so we can get money back from the state, that always helps us out a little bit. So, um, for, at the top, work salaries, ten thousand, uh, fixed charges, three thousand, travel, one thousand, equipment, fifteen thousand, utilities, one thousand, supplies, twenty-five hundred, uh, labor unemployment, thirty-seven thousand, chemicals, thirty-nine thousand, for a total of one oh eight, five hundred. Now, um, when I say equivalent of three mils, I'm predicting we're gonna have somewhere in the neighborhood of a forty thousand dollar surplus from this year. So I won't need three full mils next year to reach this hundred and eight. And we still don't know exactly how much a mil's gonna be, we're thinking thirty-six, maybe a thousand, maybe more.
Is your surplus dropping now, Roger, so you're?
It's, yeah, a little slowly.
Pretty slow though?
Right.
It's definitely pretty slow.
Yeah, but that's good, that the surplus is dropping slow.
Yeah.
We don't need to hit the three full mils, so.
Yeah, yeah. So by law, you have to do that, so that's what it's like.
Uh, yeah, and, well, we don't have to, but if we don't levy three mils, then there is money we don't get back from the state. So it's a lot better to just keep.
Once you quit taking it from the state, you'll never get back.
Well, um, maybe.
Let's, we'll keep taking it.
Yeah, so, but like I said, it doesn't cost to come to the three full mils, so. It might be two this year, maybe.
I figured one point one five, so.
One point one five, yeah, but I may probably end up with a surplus in the end. It's just really hard to tell yet. But anyway.
I've got a question, probably for you, but say if there's a surplus, can that be turned back and put into the general fund?
We usually leave it in the fund where it is, by law, it all can, but we leave it in the fund, so then we decrease. If you look at this spreadsheet I gave you, if you look at the bottom where it says we control last year's mil was one, this year I estimate one point one five, which generates about thirty-seven thousand seven, twenty-eight fifty. Cause a rural mil is less than a county mil, because you gotta take the cities out of there. And I figured a surplus of forty-four nine forty-four, taking what we have now, subtracting what he has left in his budget. And usually Roger never uses his whole budget, so it might be a little more than that. And then that total of those two together equals eighty-two seven, eight, six seventy-three. Then the revenue estimated, which is telecommunications and state aid, is thirty thousand seven forty-nine. And his budget is one oh eight five, so at the end of two thousand fifteen, if he uses all his budget, you have four thousand nine twenty-two left. If he uses all his.
What, what I'm, I guess what I, and if I'm understanding all right, what I was wondering is, if he turned that in, so we could budget the same amount, so he gets the state aid, is what I was.
As long as we levy, our, our budget is equal to three mils, he still gets it.
Okay, okay, okay.
He still gets it. That's why we have to really watch his budget.
That's, I, I didn't know if his, that budget had to get used, and then, in order to levy, in order to receive, okay.
It used to be, they had to levy three mils, is my understanding, well, I think the legislature has changed it. I'm not positive how it exactly worked, but it has to be equal to three mils, his budget. You don't have to levy, his budget has to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, for buildings and grounds, um, with Tanya's recommendation of two percent.
Eleven.
Cost of living.
Eleven.
How's the step?
Plus, well, there are no step, uh, whatever the half percent increase again, for the year served. So anyway, uh, for me, it'd be forty-six eight oh three. Uh, for the new personnel tape, Veronica's place, uh, went there again, Tanya's, uh, she gave me a list of the average, um, what an average custodian would make, and I went with the top, because we don't know. Uh, yeah, in case you didn't know, Veronica's retiring at the end of, uh, end of November.
Retired.
Pardon?
She's now retired.
She's sixty-two. Really? So, anyway, um.
You stuck me at home with Tim at fifty-six.
Sixty-two's holding on.
You stuffed yourself.
That wasn't my show face.
You're living in the house, no.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Roger.
So anyway, uh, that amount, uh, put in at thirty-one thousand one seventy-six now, depending upon experience, that may be less, but we just don't know what we're gonna get, so. I guess I figured it would best to go with the top amount, and we can always go down. So, uh, part-time salary, twelve thousand seven ninety-five, travel, one hundred, uh, electricity, memorial building, twenty-three thousand, electricity courthouse, thirty-eight thousand, steam heat, forty thousand.
So that's down, Tim?
Well, we, we've never used it, I mean, all of it, and I just, uh, thought, and I talked to, um, Barry Gage regarding if there was gonna be any large increases, and he said no. So, you know, I figured if we don't, you know, we're not using it, it's really not necessary to happen there. I guess it always could be a cushion, but anyway, for other line items, but. Uh, dropped that to forty thousand this year, including courthouse, five thousand, memorial building, three thousand, telephone services, twenty-seven five, maintenance for the courthouse, twenty-seven five, maintenance contracts, twenty-seven thousand, and capital outlay. Um, Elizabeth and I have talked this over a lot for the capital outlay, and in the end, I think, uh, we come up with just four thousand for capital outlay for next year. However, we'll be dipping into that three percent, three mils, that we kinda levy for the building for use, uh, because I do want to, uh, try and mill down and resurface a parking lot out here. I talked to Kevin earlier, and he gave me an estimate of seventy-five thousand. Cause parking lot get pretty cracked up, mill out with a couple inches and replace it. So, and, um, district court had fifty-five hundred, uh, I didn't wanna get some cabinet for the, uh, jury room, and I don't know what else exactly, uh, they wanted to get. And then, um, carpeting for, so, well, okay, let's just leave the carpeting for right now. Uh, so that gives us a total of three seventy-one, eight seventy-four, sixty.
But we're gonna decrease his capital outline, outline four.
So I'm gonna decrease that by a hundred and fifty-five thousand mils?
Right, because we're gonna take that out of the county loan fund, cause that's improvements for the courthouse, that three mils, instead of depleting the general fund. Because I did some figures, and I put it on your desk, but I'll explain that later, so. So if you wanna change his capital outline four, so his final budget is two eighty-five, eight seventy-four, sixty.
So we're taking eighty-six thousand out of the capital outlay?
Right, because it'll come out of the county loan fund for the paving, and I think the roof, we decided, for the.
Well, that's gonna be the follow-up here.
That's sixteen.
The paving and the, um.
Clerk of Court.
District Court.
District Court.
And I have already now in my other budget.
So that brings it down to two eighty-five, eight seventy-four?
Eight seventy-four, sixty, yes.
Is that where we took the elevator out?
Yeah, and the elevator's coming partly out of Roger's budget, partly out of the county loan fund. It's called a county loan, it's three mils that you can use for improvements within the courthouse, and that'll be done by the end of the year, right? The elevator, we're.
Supposedly.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I said three seventy-one, I got it written off here, here to the side, two eighty-five thousand, sorry.
Um, Roger. Can you put anything in there for bars improvement on the sheriffs?
No, I did not.
Good.
But, you know, okay.
Well, I'm just asking, because it would be.
She, she is right regarding that, I've been looking at that for a couple of years, and I did talk to a carpenter here, and showed it to him. Uh, up at the top, on the trim there, it's almost like enormous crown molding, and where you're gonna find anything like that, I do not know. But yes, it is getting crocked, and she's right, so. The window down, uh, bottom, that's no problem, I can replace that, that'll be a hundred dollars, I mean, I replaced the one above a couple of years ago.
Molding's up on the south side of the building?
Yeah, actually it goes all the way around, but on the south side, you can see, if you look up, you'll see in a couple of spots where it's really rotted out. And it has been that way for a few years, and just getting worse, and I just really kinda had a loss on who the government do that.
Carpenters, I haven't got any ideas.
I showed one, like I said, the other day, and he just looked at that and kinda said, wow, so.
Can you replace it from, with what it is, with just the basic? Order, I don't know.
Well, well, you know what, when we're, when you're done here, well, the south side of the surest sauce, and look up to the top.
Won't understand what I'm looking at, don't wanna learn.
Oh.
Don't wanna bother you.
Well, I just, I just.
But she's right.
If we need to put it in the budget, we need to put it in the budget, if we need to take it out of the three mil loan fund.
And maybe you know, you know.
If it can come out of there instead, you know, fine, I just don't wanna have the budget too small, so we can't do, it can't do it, and all of a sudden we've got major leakage, and all kinds of problems, and then we've got big bucks.
Where it's at, I mean, leakage shouldn't be an issue, it would just be kinda dropping, it's right at the very edge of the roof, and it just drops straight down, so. Leaking into the building shouldn't be a problem, but yes, it does need to be.
But it could be ice damp, and then end up having problems.
Possibly.
If you look at page thirty-five, and that's the county loan, that two nine two six, um, I budgeted at one forty-one, and seventy-five thousand is for paving, district court is fifty-five hundred, an extra, Roger always puts a little extra in case something comes up.
Just because.
Seventy-five hundred, so then there's fifty-three thousand still left for emergencies, hope something would happen where we would need to use it. I always, even though we have an emergency fund, but that's for resolutions by the board, like the Prairie School, we had to tear that down, so. So that's, if you wanna note that on your, it's a hundred and forty-one thousand, seventy-five thousand for paving, district court fifty-five hundred, an extra seventy-five, so we have an excess fifty-three. And there's always emergencies within the courthouse, I mean, we've had a ceiling leak, we've had.
Yeah, that's why I put aside the seventy-five hundred, to see how it goes.
So. So that explains a little bit.
Kicking a dead dog, I guess, for next year's space allocation, there's all money in that, in the maintenance for that?
No, you didn't put it back in there.
You didn't put anything back in, so it's dead?
Um, regarding carpeting for, uh, social services, I was originally gonna put that in for next year, but then, uh, in talking to Elizabeth, we thought we might try and do it this year instead. Uh, it's five offices on the second floor, and two down in the basement. And I did, you have two estimates here, one from Almont's for four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, and one from Thompson's for five thousand six hundred and thirty-four. So.
And you would use a budget from this year?
Yes.
Fourteen?
Yes.
Do you have that money in there?
Well, we could use from the three mils, yes.
Do you have that now, or do you actually?
I would like a motion from the board, because they do have it on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept a bid from Almont's, but we're not.
Motion insert second?
Second.
Motion in second. Roll call.
DeSau.
Aye.
From. Earns.
Aye.
Heiser.
Hi.
Aye, motion carried. You got two smiley faces out of that.
So, now if I can get parks filed, then we'll be really good.
You'll be in the money.
So, but, uh, I guess that's all I got.
Any questions for Roger?
Thank you, Roger.
For Roger?
Thanks, Roger.
Bill Otis.
Jordan Sweet.
We need one of those.
Page forty.
We're on it.
Okay, if you look through our budget, it's probably one of the easiest ones in the county. The first three salaries, mine, Brenda's, and Cindy's, are all set either by the state or by the county, using the present salary schedule. And you'll see on the right side there, the loans, thirty-one eight thirty-four for me, twenty-three nine oh seven for Brenda, thirty-six oh sixty for Cindy. The next one is the fixed charges, of course, you know, that is the health insurance, travel, um, six thousand like last year. I have, we have been using county, or state fleet to travel out of county, so we've been able, as you can see in that uh, second column there, we've saved the county some money there, just by using state fleet. The others have changed very insignificant. Uh, equipment repairs, I increased that by a hundred bucks just from inflation. Uh, dues and registration state is staying. We did have one change this year, and that is, uh, Fargo has taken away our postage now, we no longer have any postage available from the state level or from the federal level. So we had to budget in some postage that we normally got from that for our office, and that's the change in the office supplies and miscellaneous is that primary reason. So we increased our budget fifty-five hundred bucks from last year. If you see the numbers up to one-twenty-five, fifty-one. Questions, comments?
We should resolve this issue.
Yeah, it's pretty uncomplicated. Okay? Thank you. Deesap, we're here.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Speaking of uncomplicated, Kevin's up.
Yeah. Guarantee that won't be that fast. See, I think mine is on page twenty-one, is that right?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
All right, what's page nineteen?
Blackout.
Blackout.
All right, blackout fund is, uh, first line in there is under construction is for, um, put to my cheap sheet here, uh, I have one, two, three, four, five different items on there, repair soft spots on federalated roads, overlay patches, the hard cones. Miscellaneous projects that come up during the year, a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we need to replace two culverts on Ramsey nine C. North Edmore on the pavement on nine. And a right-of-way purchase for the, and design for the truck road is a hundred and fifty thousand. The total is six fifty, six hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. Is that right-of-way purchase, what was that again, Kevin?
Right-of-way and design, both are a hundred and fifty thousand.
If you look further back in your pages, Kevin has it all spelled out on the budget lines, it's been here before. Just a few, it's not, it doesn't have enough.
All right, we got.
It's, it's like four pages behind his budget.
Oh, just then?
Yeah. What do you saw? Sorry.
I got it.
There you go, I see it.
There's that.
Everybody followed us, why not? Glad you cleared that out. Very good.
It's right after page twenty-three.
So any questions about that? Moving on to the next one, that is for, uh, the next one is our common road fund. That's actually, uh, where we get our salaries for administration, myself and, uh, what? Fixed charges are there, uh, salaries we use the scale that Tony was suggesting. Uh, the third item there, purchase equipment, I just put that in there, two hundred thousand. Not exactly sure what, what I had in mind there, would like to get another ball chuck, but seeing all the year goals. Destruction. Graveling of the turnback seventeen, that comes up on our five-year plan this year, three hundred thou, or for fifty thousand. Then again, there's a line item for miscellaneous projects that come up throughout the year, three hundred thousand. FEMA match money, fifty thousand. Think by the end of twenty fifteen, provided we don't have another disaster, we'll be done with the FEMA match money part of it. And then the last one there is for resale of culverts, hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's, uh, like a in and out, what we buy and what we sell. So that total was eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. Any questions there?
This will be a target?
That's, like, things that come up, there's no specific. I've got a lot of money that I'm carrying over from this budget, from this.
This year?
Yeah, from this, uh, what do you call it, is it a budget?
Yeah, the two thousand fourteen budget?
Yeah, from this category, or this common road fund, there we go.
I have a simple question for you. On your budget item line items, you got, for that county road, you got eight-seventy-seven, nine twenty-five. But on the budget on page twenty, you've got eight-twenty-seven, nine twenty-five.
Interesting.
I think it's fifty thousand difference between, uh, construction money, construction.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
So that, should that be four?
No, what, what's on these, uh, page sheets, that's what's correct.
Okay, okay.
So we just did the math wrong on the back pages.
So it should be eight-twenty-seven?
That's correct, yes. Then we just probably reduce the, uh, miscellaneous projects by two fifty, to two fifty, make that difference.
We, uh, money from thirteen fifty-eight, that, uh, money.
That comes up later, in another fund.
Must have helped your, uh, capital outlay.
What's that?
That money must have helped with the machining purchases.
Yes, it did, yes. But actually, this is leftover from, uh, the previous money that the state gave us.
No, thirteen fifty-eight can only be used on construction, on roads, that's the one we're spending this year.
Right, that's specific to roads, the other money they gave us here before, they didn't earmark it for nothing, they didn't.
So the thirteen fifty-eight is just for roads, for construction, but the other money is where you use for equipment?
Or whatever.
For what you will use.
You got roads, equipment, purchases, yeah. It wasn't earmarked for anything. Even wages, I mean, some of the companies were using the wages. Um, so on the next one, is there any questions on the last one?
I have one question on salaries, how many years is Brent in there?
Three?
Going on three, maybe two full years.
And all he gets is one percent, huh?
I don't know.
Well, I think it's, cause Kevin gave him a little more last year.
Well, he changed his, his job category. Cause I was thinking that he should have a three percent increase for that, and then the two, so it should've been five percent, but.
Oh, Brent's going up three percent.
He's going up three percent, but that includes his two percent for, um.
In his step.
In his step.
Right.
So he's only going, so he's only going up three percent total.
Right, but so is, there's a lot of rest of it there.
But he's, he should have a three percent increase in his step, and a two percent for his, um, cost of living increase. He should have a five percent increase, is what I'm saying, is what it looks like it should be to me. If he's, if he's in his first, if he's in his second or third year, he should have a three percent increase. Plus he should have a two percent for his cost of living increase, he should have five percent. Kevin's got, how many years?
How much?
How many years you got?
Uh, seventeen.
Seventeen, so he should have three percent, or two and, two point seven five percent. And you rounded that up to three. But I think Brent is supposed to have a five percent increase.
Well, we honestly, I just used the common, common business, I didn't.
Well, that is Tony's thing, that, that does include your, this position thing.
Yeah.
It should include three percent for two years and three years, plus, plus two percent for cost of living.
This sheet you have, that includes the two percent, right? Everybody's just figured on, this, this already, if you look at the bottom, it includes the two percent. So if he's only been here three years and he's administrative assistant, he should be at twenty-six ninety-three, he's already at three thousand.
Okay, so if you. I just, I just didn't understand that, because I thought he would get a, a three percent increase.
By looking at the chart.
By looking at the chart, and then two percent for cost of living.
No, two percent's already in there.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
So this is right, which may.
Yeah, okay, no, you, you're right then, I just didn't understand it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that hundred and seven is yours and Brent's salaries together?
That's correct, yes, yep. All of it, I mean, all of our salaries comes out of, it's not split in two different columns.
Except the highway guys, right?
The highway guys on the different column, you and Brent are, are.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, the next page is county bridge, uh, that's pretty straightforward, the twenty thousand is for, uh, equipment rental, and, uh, eighty thousand is for purchasing forwards for bridge work that we do. Bridge replacements. Any questions there? Highway tax, the next one, that, that, that is the money that we get from the sale of gasoline and fuel, sales tax. So, first line item there is the salaries of all the workers. And fixed charges, salaries, it does include a line item for thirty thousand of overtime also. Thirty-five thousand of overtime. And we never have used all that, but it depends on the winters, how that overtime goes, so, it's there. Um, next one, uh, insurance includes, uh, vehicle insurance, building insurance, workforce comp, drug and alcohol testing. All that type of stuff. Travel, I did raise it, um, this year, cause of some of the committees on, uh, the training that the guys are going through. Electricity. Our utilities is fifty-two thousand, I raised that a little, that includes electricity, keys, phone, water, and battery. Uh, next one is office supplies. That includes the supplies for like printer ink and paper and all that stuff, janitor supplies, postage, clothing allowance, and advertising. Advertising, it'll be a bigger and bigger line item. Yeah, and the next one is gas, oil, and fuel. So that includes like all our diesel fuel, our gasoline, and motor oil, out of reasons. Supplies and materials are in twenty-three thousand. So the jewelry equipment, I guess I'll award that for for that reason, but that includes gravel, sand, riprap, uh, cutting edges, slow waves, filters, tires, motor oil, and hot and cold mix, side posts. Repairs and maintenance is repairs and maintenance we do on machines. So that includes all our repairs and parts. And building maintenance. And capital outlay is for the purchase of motor gravers, I think that's a little bit, I figured a little bit high there, but, um, again, there's a little bit of surplus medical, so that's where I put the surplus. And then the last, construction. And HB thirteen fifty-eight. Combined, or, or the last line item there, five hundred thousand.
Kevin, what's the five thousand in construction that's never been in there before? Some new numbers.
That's for building maintenance. That's what, on the back sheets, that's what I put it under, like, uh, light hogs, uh.
I, I thought you said that, it's coming out of, depending on.
Yeah, I might have. When you look at the, the back page or the third group of numbers, groups those items together. So like four fifty-three is, then if you go to the main expense sheet. If you go under four fifty-three, that's repairs and maintenance. Six forty-one is capital outlay, would be the building maintenance and purchase of motor gravers.
Are you inclined, what are you inclined to buy for motor gravers this year, this coming year?
What's that?
What are you inclined to buy for motor gravers?
Three. I think roughly, two hundred and thirty, um, roughly.
Kevin, that five thousand, that you have in construction, should be over the capital outlay?
Yeah, it should be.
You just broke out from capital outlay?
Under six seventy. You should, on the back sheets, that should probably be under six seventy-three twenty. This is the six forty-one, three twenty.
So leave that in construction then, on.
Right.
How about the line?
Okay.
The building maintenance?
Yes.
Should be six seventy on, on that back sheet, it's under six forty-one, right about motor gravers right now, and it needs to be six seventy-three. It's five hundred and dollars you see on the line.
Before we buy like paint for painting the shops, repair the overhead doors. Getting on the right line items.
On that page two of that slide there, the remaining HB three wanting to buy projects, five hundred, that's, that's state money?
Yes, it is, and that should probably be thirteen eighty-five.
Thirteen eighty, thirteen fifty-eight.
Yeah.
Thirteen eighty-five.
Thirteen eighty-five or thirteen fifty-eight?
Thirteen fifty-eight.
Well, thirteen fifty-eight can only be used for construction, for road construction, so is this the, or is this the rest of the house building?
It's thirteen fifty-eight.
It's thirteen fifty-eight?
Yeah, it's correct on the, on the main sheets, it's wrong on like line item.
Actually, Kevin, is there a timeline on that, when you have that, that part?
Uh, no, they didn't, they didn't give us a timeline, but they wanted to see us get it straight away, since that meant that we needed a need for it, and.
Do you have any of your outline shots that are in care of repair, I mean, as far as the floor?
Yes, everywhere's probably.
Well, but could you spend any, um, not the thirteen fifty-eight, but any of the other money to put in the floor in there?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Please?
Because.
Actually, we could start all over in Edmore, if you want, I mean, uh.
Or we've got money to do it, please.
No, by my opinion, I think that shop should be all the time. Go away, say if I went out to the dead end, if a person could buy a two-eighty's out there, you'd have to place, put up a little.
Go away, say if I went out to the dead end, if a person could buy a two eight result, they'd have the place to put up a little stock by the ground if he felt the need for it, you know, like when you're doing. I think bridge work and this and that, where you'd have something there, I, I think it would be great to see that shop, not that shop, that shop doesn't work.
A shop put up there?
A shop.
Well, I.
I don't, I don't know, maybe that's totally other reason considering building the shop.
I just can, I just keep fearing about, um. The need for more safety in that situation with our, with, and I just think that if, if the money is there, then it might be a project well worth doing.
The floor, the floor in there is a hazard.
That floor is a, is a terrible hazard and it's, it's a hazard for workers and it's.
And it's a public building, the public is right to stop in there.
It's a public building and it, and it needs to be.
It's not here big enough, our machines are getting bigger and bigger, overhead door.
It could be constructed and uh, the other one couldn't be used until it got done.
Until it had done it.
It, uh, no, even going in there, you, you've gotta have that rating in, in the exact spot, it's gotta be pulled, sucked in before you get ready, there is a room.
Exactly, I mean, it's just an accident waiting to happen.
I agree with you, yeah.
But if you've got, if you've got money in your budget to do it this year and we need to spend the money, please consider doing it.
Did the drain issue get solved or did it?
Freesies every year.
Yeah, so I mean, there's not a reason.
It's uh, yeah.
We'll work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Next one is our, is uh, is what we need for our chip seal fund, so. Our project next year was a chip seal three A just off the hand, hand there and also nine C. East of there.
You say they had it on last year?
And then nine, way on the end.
Oh.
The one where you have to put forwards in?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, includes the striping.
Is that nine way east of the highway or is this the whole?
Whole part, whole east there.
Okay. I always didn't figure out no culvert, I didn't have a lot of money on it.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred?
They're deep, they're really deep, so I don't know, but I estimated high, but they're probably a six foot grade there, five foot grade anyway. They're rusted out, the bottoms are rusted out, almost gone.
What's, how many's there, two or three?
Two in one location and, I don't know if there's one or two on the other or not, maybe two, but the second location, they're smaller. One location, they're probably five foot.
Do you need a rail along that side there?
Uh, no, because they're culverts and, uh, it's a nice slope, even most of the ditch, bay of the ditch there. I don't know.
The more you can stay away from a railing, the better off you are. If you put a railing up there, absolutely every stone going, you will be bothered there. What a sign. There, there's, there's markers out there. There was, there really used to be, there was. And there's out there, you look on the side, so you can see if there's a sign there. Okay, I'm not saying, I know they have to do.
Yeah.
But you know, even like that, if you get by with like in fiberglass ones, that way, maintenance is just so much nature without, you know. Check that out. Check that out. I'll tell you a story about it afterward.
So I think that was it, wasn't that good, oh, I got the cemeteries and. Uh, what's my next page?
Thirty-three is the amount.
So those, all those accounts on that page, you're looking at these, these have all been closed out. The next page. This is the two thousand ten, eleven, and thirteen disasters, which two thousand ten, I have two hundred thousand. I don't remember how two thousand eleven turned out, I was like, who's the numbers, or what's the bottom number?
Oh, it should be one million three twenty-five, sorry. Yeah, because we added three twen- three hundred twenty-five thousand for the bios.
For whole bios for uh, more central planning. And then the twenty thirteen disasters, I expect most of that to be paid, uh. People are getting their work done from those disasters, so. Two thousand thirteen, we had two disasters, that's why there's two different accounts there. And then the last page is cemetery, whole cemetery maintenance, sixty-one hundred, and we use all that every year and then some.
Are you limited to what you can get?
So many now.
I'm sure if you put.
Point one zero.
Or costs, I didn't have to deal with. I, I perceive that to get to be more and more, as the population of the world goes away and there's no family left around. For who's in the cemetery, they're just gonna be talking more and more of them, the country centers.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that do it themselves, so.
Yeah. Can we, maybe we take it out of another fund?
Yeah, so we do end up taking out of our, uh, highway tax fund.
Every time there's more of this one.
It's, it's that point one zero.
And Kevin, I, I hate to argue with you, but that hiring point three percent is, the cost of living is not included in there. If it was, if it was, Benny would only be getting a half a percent increase.
I don't see how.
It's, it's not, he should be getting a five percent increase because he should have three percent for a step increase and two percent for cost of living. This is all step increases, it has nothing to do with, with cost of living increase.
We, at the bottom, the older step did not have the two percent cost of living in there, and she redid it for us, way at the bottom, in the corner. In the left-hand corner, it said include the two percent cost of living.
So half of it includes the two percent cost of living and the other half does not. So when you go to seven years, it includes the cost of living, which is all you get.
Includes everything, it includes two percent and the cost of living.
So if you've been here seven years, you get a two percent cost of living increase but nothing else, cause you're an incoming?
Well, for instance, Brent, if you look at his title, and he's a, he's been here three years, he should be at twenty-six ninety-three, but he's way up here. At a nine, cause of his experience, three thousand seventy-eight is my understanding if I look at the.
He's at nine, so he got a one and a half percent increase.
No, he got a three percent, right now.
Right, I know he got a three percent, but doesn't it say one and a half then?
I, I don't understand, it's, it's this total brief to me because this includes the two percent cost of living, so don't even look at that. If he's at a step three, that's where he should be at.
But he's not at a step three, what you're saying is that it's way up.
Yes.
Eight to nine, yes.
Since he's twenty-three to nine.
But you would, you would take whatever nine is, because that's already got.
Okay, I, I just, I'm not saying he, he need more, I'm trying to understand. What the step increase is, what is the step increase between eight and nine and doesn't include a cost of living increase?
It does, because it.
But it's only one and a half percent?
You need, well, that's how, based on what their job duties are, imagine, right, so maybe.
But if the base is two percent, cause that's cost of living increase, how?
Ignore this, ignore the stuff that she's got at the top up there, that's just for hiring point midpoint, you know, like it says two percent, one and a half, one and a half.
So, these aren't, these percentages aren't right, these, these aren't, these percentages out here are not included out here.
The two percent cost of living is included in this step. And if you look at the sheet that I gave you, if you look at Brent's, he's, he was at thirty-six hundred a year, which is three thousand a month, okay? The two percent, no, the step is seventeen dollars, because last year Kevin changed his title and actually, he's not at three years, he's at.
Eight.
Eight.
Eight years, right.
So then the two percent, it would go to three thousand seventy-seven, which she rounded on her scale, three thousand seventy-eight, so it's a three percent.
So these percentages up here mean nothing.
Right, don't worry about those, those means, those mean anything.
No, okay, that's, that's all I wanna know, is it looks like here, like they're not, they're not getting even two percent?
Like for instance, my deputy, Candy, she's been here since ninety-five. But because when I took over the auditor position in two thousand one, she became the chief deputy, so her title changed. So it's whatever she's been, chief deputy, which is thirteen years, plus we added four years for the experience, so she went from. Uh, I think she went from, uh, let's see, if I look back at Candy's, I gotta rethink my process of how she explained that.
I just wanna understand, she went from a sixteen to a seventeen, and if you look at that scale, it's already in that scale, whatever the step is.
Right.
Thirty-seven seventy-nine to thirty-eight oh seven, yeah.
Okay, Kevin.
Are you done?
Yeah.
It's confusing, I know, cause I had to really.
Well, the reason I'm asking, uh, Mr. Chairman, could we take a short, I know we're getting a little, we have, if we had a short five minute reason.